It'll be used for if we have a utility main break on 41 in downtown Punta Gorda. We can put that out there as a detour. Fourth of July, Halloween. We need flashers out there to alert people coming through the town that there's some issues. That's what it's used for.
Okay. Was there any other questions or concerns with regard to that?
With those restrictions, I'm in full support of it.
Okay.
Me too. I'm good with that.
We have a motion then. Go ahead.
Motion to approve F-1.
It's been moved and seconded to approve F-1. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks for the speech.[41.46][41.46](Laughter).
All right. We are now moving into our regular agenda. If acceptable to everyone, I'd like to move 7A to the end of our unfinished business. That's our agreement with the water authority since they are now in session as well today. We're not sure if they will complete their business before we get to that item, but if we have any word, it would be nice to know it ahead of time.
Agreed.
Thank you.
So we're going to move, first of all, citizens' comments on any of the issues regarding our regular agenda, our convenience fee for automated merchant services, our agreement with the water authority, discussion of legislative requests to the Charlotte County delegation, event closures, sidewalk closures for Gilchrist Park, our wayfinding master plan, and our website redesign project. Yes, sir.
Good morning. Michael Haymans, I'm here for item 7C, event sidewalk closure. Michael Haymans, I'm part of the organization that puts on the Hibiscus Festival each year. And the Gilchrist Park has been our traditional location. We've tried it over at Lashley Park, and we just get swallowed up. And it's really because of the walkability to the historic home tours that we have and the location on the harbor. It's just the right place for that particular event. But we need the park from the road to the water. And so we have a need to control the area. And so as part of that control, I mean, we have liability that we take on for the park during the time. We have, we carry insurance in order to help assure that we're going to be responsible for those things that we're liable for. And so as part of that, we control the area. And it's important to that. We also, we charge so little to get in. It's really a dollar donation, basically, to get into the park. And we have three days of events that really involve a lot of the community. And we use snow fence to control our area in order to get that little bit of money that's the donation. I mean, it costs about $12,000 in hard cash money to put the event on. And we do have vendors that we get money from, but we, but a lot of it, and we have the sales of drinks and food and such. But a good portion of what we get is the, are the people who come in and who pay their dollar or who give a little bit more donation. We do block the sidewalks off on Harbor Walk, but we do it only during the times that we're actually open and operating. And so it's a portion of the time during the day on Saturday and a small portion of the day on Sunday. And we post notices ahead of time so that 24 hours ahead of time that there's, that there is going to be a sidewalk closure. We provide a detour signage so that people can do that little bit of inconvenience of bumping around us. We hope that people who are out there would then stop and come in and be part of the event. But we really need to manage and maintain the closure, and it needs to go from the road all the way to the, to the, to the water. And so don't quite understand what the push is to not allow us to close and control that. I know that we've had, over the years, frankly, one or two seems to us cantankerous individuals that don't want to do the detour around and claim, "This is the public sidewalk, and you can't keep me out of it, and what are you doing?" And really, what it boils down to is that it's a community event, and it's really important to the event, and it's such a minimal inconvenience to somebody to have to, for that very short period of time, to bump around, that please don't keep us from being able to control the area.
Thank you, Mr. Haymans. All right. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on any additional items?
I am Gary Wine, and I should have at least one comment today, I think, when we come to these meetings. I want to agree in general, 98, 98.5 percent with what the gentleman just said. I think the one thing that we need as a council to, or I would ask the council to be cognizant of, is not to do anything that would squash these types of events. They are good for the community, they're proper, and they're good for the whole spirit of it, but not to let it get to the point that we have one every, three or four every month or something like that. There should be some limit to the number of events that we allow to have, have that. That would become an inconvenience. But to do this four, five, six times a year for these various special events, whether it's something that's as, as good as the event we're discussing, or a jazz festival, or something that's very special, I don't think that we, we want to ensure that those events do not have to deal with this type of issue because of other events that may be overpushing that aspect. So anyway, that's, I want to leave you guys with.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on any of the topics? Okay. We will move on then, and we will begin with our discussion of legislative requests to the Charlotte County delegation. Sorry? Oh, I'm sorry, budget. Discussion of the convenience fee. We start there. Sorry. I was already into unfinished. Discussion of convenience fee for automated merchant services. Who's going to speak to that? Yes?
Good morning. Sharon Nippenberg, Controller for the City. During the budget process, we had identified efficiencies that we could provide, and the Utilities Advisory Board was particularly interested in the convenience fee. What we find is that people are interested in using their credit cards, debit cards, to make their payments, and of course, on the flip side, they may enjoy getting rewards for using those. On the bad side, for the city government, we find that we, we are increasingly growing in the, in the cost of allowing the credit cards. For the, for the utilities fund, it will be over $50,000 for the fiscal year 2016 budget. For the Marina Fund, which is a very small fund, it's going to be upwards of $10,000 in cost. So our suggestion had been to, for those who would like that convenience, we're happy to provide it, but perhaps they should bear all or a portion of those costs. And so we, bringing it back to you now, as we had promised, and if you would like us to pursue it, this would be the time, because we will be putting our credit card business out to bid. We call it the Automated Merchant Services. And they can run the program one of two ways. They can either just charge the city a fee for giving us the program, or they can do a pass-through cost to the customer. And so that will be going out to bid, and we need a direction from you as to whether you would allow us to suggest the convenience fee.
Sharon, what is the percentage that would be charged? Back to the cardholder.
That's a good question, and we can't tell you that yet because it depends on what the bids will look like. That will be a part of the bid process, what they want to charge and pass through to our customers. I can tell you that when we've looked at it across the state, there's a lot of communities that have it and others that want to do it. So what I found is some do a percentage, and the percentage is, can be as low as 1.5, as high as 2.6. I'm sorry, one was actually 5 percent. And some of them do a flat fee, which is kind of interesting. I'm not sure that that's very fair, but some of them do 2.25 as a fee, $1.49, and one was 4.95. So it's all over the board. But for the city, to emphasize, it will be revenue neutral. We are not trying to generate a revenue. It will be a pass-through cost to the consumer.
Comments? Yes, Nancy first?
Well, just a question. So how does this work today? You said there's a, a, someone that we do business with, and they then are the ones that offer all these different credit cards to people? Is that, because I've had people ask me, what credit cards do we take? Can we take credit cards that are maybe, have only lower fees than, you know? So I think we all need to understand.
Yes. Well, we, we're trying to make it as useful to the public as possible.
I don't know. Is American Express allowed?
No. There are a few that are not allowed. American Express has always been one of them because they have the very highest fees. But for the most part, you can use just about any credit card to make your payment. And depending on which card the customer uses, the pass-through fee to the city can be low or high. So we're taking all of the cards, and we are getting a range of fees. The one, the, so it, it depends on how you structure your contract.
First, Kim?
Rachel's first.
First, Kim.
Okay. So you're, you're getting ready to put it out to bid, the merchant services?
Yes.
Okay. So then you get your fee back, and then we would, we would charge whatever that is?
Yes.
Like some banks, you know, for instance, Bank of America uses a third party for their merchant services.
Yes.
Chase has their own, so their fees are always less. So whoever we get, and hopefully, we get someone who has their own, which there's very few of them, by the way, we would have the lowest fee. But I definitely think we need to pass the cost through, onto the person who uses the card.
You said Rachel has some comments?
I would be, Councilmember Keisling, I would be in favor of a small, flat fee to recoup part of what the city is charging. These systems encourage timely payments and cut down on staff processing time, so there is value. Also, more online payments are going to be available, so we need to make it fair for the customers.
Thank you. Tom?
I was going to ask a question about facilitated payments with the use of the credit cards. Has the city seen payments increase as a result of allowing the customers to pay by credit card? Facilitated, as?
I don't think I can speak to that. I'm sorry. I don't know the answer to that one.
So if, I'd like to separate the two, the Marina and the utility fund. If we didn't charge, recoup those costs through the credit card users, wouldn't those costs just be passed on, and then the entire customer base would be, would be paying for it?
That is correct. That is correct.
So that would be my concern. So what we're saying is, the rest of us taxpayers are paying for that individual's convenience.
Yes.
And that, to me, is not fair. And I agree with Kim that, you know, this should be just a pass-through, revenue neutral. And I also agree with Kim to find the company that's going to provide the lowest percentage of fees so that it is, it is as fair as we possibly get to everyone. But I don't believe that I, if I wish to use a credit card, I don't expect Kim to be paying for my fee. So I should be paying it for myself.
And it is low. You'll get a low fee.
We hope so. Yes, Nancy?
I, one of the questions I had from a resident was making sure that we made it clear to people what the no-cost options were. So there is, I know that we do offer automatic withdrawal from a checking account.
Yes, bank drafting. It is, it is fabulous.
Are we also offering, what is the, if you go online to renew your, well, there's PayPal, but they, they also charge as well, but people could use their own PayPal account.
We do, we don't encourage that one.
But there is also, then, that the one that's E-check, where it becomes like a?
Check. It's still a check.
It's E-check. I mean, if you go to renew your vehicle licenses, you get these options, and they also charge.
They do charge.
They charge to be.
Because most of those become labor-intensive. The bank drafting is definitely the one that I recommend to everyone. I did it when I moved here, before I worked for the city. It just, you get the notification, just like everybody does, that this is the amount of your bill that will be coming out of your account in this little period of time, so you've got about 20 days' notice that it's coming out. And it's, the amount of work for staff is minimal, and the cost to the customer is nothing, the cost to the city is nothing. So it's, it's the, it's a win-win for everyone to do the bank drafting. And obviously, if you had a dispute, if you were concerned about your bill, you just call Helen or her staff and talk about it and get it settled. It's not like, oh, you can't fight City Hall. You know, we're very responsive to concerns about utility bills, because sometimes people do have water leaks, and we will go out and investigate it and, you know, and make it right, so.
Tom?
I would just like to mention that many of the, the credit cards in use today offer cash givebacks in a rate of 1% or 2%, so, you know, I, I'm okay with.
Yes, I'm a little concerned with those cash backs, that more people will want to use them.
Yes, of course.
And that, that cost comes directly to the ratepayers.
Or airline miles.
People are used to paying those fees. We do it for everything else. Why not the city?
And there are options if they don't want to pay by credit card.
Exactly. Automatic draft.
Thank you.
Do we have direction now? We can put it out to bid?
Yes.
Include this option?
Yes.
Okay.
Please. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right. Now, moving forward, legislative request to the Charlotte County delegation. Our material needs to be to our delegation by October 9th, so that doesn't give us too much time in terms of preparing our final documentation. I did prepare for council-suggested approach. We obviously are going to follow up with regards to the authority meeting. Hopefully, today, we will have information about next steps with that. But I also would like to suggest that we incorporate an issue that we have talked about before, which is oversight of our potable water, watershed. And I've kind of started the beginning of it, but I know David has some additional information, our city attorney, and we were also talking with Joan LeBeau, who's worked on this issue as well, to provide some material. David, you wanted to provide some suggestions on this?
Yeah, and I apologize for not getting this to you sooner. I found myself dispossessed from my condo late last week as a result of a massive mold infestation that we didn't know anything about. So I've been kind of in a hotel since then, and to make matters worse, my computer got infected by a virus, so.
You're not having a good time, are you?
No.
I hope you know, I hope you know a good attorney.[1029.04][1029.04](Laughter).
So I.[1031.04][1031.04](Laughter).
Can you, can you go sit in a, another room and speak to us so we don't catch it?
Yeah, yeah. Anyway, I've got two, two different options at either poll of the, of the, you know, what we may be able to achieve. Let me suggest that since, since getting involved in the case and getting a better understanding of what's happening in the watershed, and without going into greater detail, I would, I would recommend that we don't limit our request for oversight to the half-mile buffer zone, because I think the impacts are within the entire watershed. And so let me, let me, let me, I'm going to read out loud so that you haven't had a chance to look at this, and for the members of the public who hadn't had a chance to get a copy of this, will, will hear the language. Option A, which, which I think is, is the reaching-for-the-moon option, but this is, this is modeled after the Federal Clean Water Act, Section 401 certification. Just a very quick overview of that. The EPA under the, and Congress under the Clean Water Act requires states that are going to be issuing permits to protect the navigable waters of the United States from discharges of any kind, requires the state's regulations to be as stringent, if not more stringent, than the federal government's regulations. And so when the permit is, application is submitted to the federal government for some sort of activity regulated by the federal government that may impact a navigable water, the federal government asks the state to provide a certification of compliance with the state's environmental regulations for this particular project. And then using that certification and using its own investigation of the project, the federal government will either grant or deny the permit. And I thought that was a pretty good way of making sure that the city had an opportunity to have a, not only a meaningful input, but a very substantial way of controlling the activities that get approved that potentially impact Shell and Prairie Creek. And again, without being elaborating more, even though, for example, Swift Mudd has permitting jurisdiction in these activities, as part of my preparation for the next round of the hearing, I've been reviewing just about every permit that Swift Mudd has issued for activities within the watershed, and it doesn't really look like that Swift Mudd is looking at the impacts the same way we would want Swift Mudd to look at the impacts. And I'll just leave it at that. So let me, let me just read to you what I propose.
Excuse me. Can we put this on the yellow?
Oh, yeah. Great. That would be awesome. We have a copy?
I think she has a copy. She has a copy already. Right? That way you can have it.
In reading through this, again, I've noticed that there is a couple of words that were missing from the third line from the bottom. I'll assert those when we get to it. So this is, option A is the one that's modeled after the Federal Clean Water Act, and like I said, this is, this is shooting for the moon or trying to hit a home run or grant something. Anyway, it would read, and then let me also say that, that this language, while it's all very regulatory, is similar not only to what the Federal Clean Water Act requires, but also what the state's environmental regulations would also require.
The state's?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, state's?
State's. So this, the regulatory requirements would be.
Thank you.
So, so the concepts here are not really new. But it says, "No, no new permit or license or any renewal, modification, or extension of an existing permit or license may be granted by any state or county body or agency for any activity within the Shell and Prairie Creek watersheds without first obtaining a certificate of no objection from the City of Punta Gorda. The requirement for said certificate shall apply only to activities which are reasonably expected to be conducted within the surficial aquifer located in the Shell or Prairie Creek watersheds. The boundaries of the Shell and Prairie Creek watershed shall be those established by the Southwest Florida Water Management District. The City of Punta Gorda shall grant or deny any requested certificate of no objection within 30 days of receipt of a written request from the applicant. If no action is taken within said time, the certificate of no objection shall be deemed granted. The City of Punta Gorda may deny a certificate of no objection if the City of Punta Gorda determines that the applicant has failed to provide reasonable assurances based upon plans, test results, studies, or other information that the proposed new activity or renewal, modification, or extension of a permit or license for existing activity will not result in adverse impacts either individually or cumulatively to the quality, excuse me, quantity or quality of the water in Shell or Prairie Creeks. Before denying a certificate of no objection, the City of Punta Gorda shall provide notice to the applicant of the city's intended action, affording the applicant, and here's where we would assert, an opportunity to provide additional information to the city to demonstrate its entitlement to such a certificate. The issuance of an intent to deny shall toll the 30-day decision deadline." So this way, we really, I wouldn't say necessarily that we have a total veto power over what the state or county permitting decisions would be, but we certainly have a major stake in what those decisions would be. And the only way we could accomplish that type of oversight would be through legislative action.
And what would that take? And maybe this is a question for, for Tom Jackson. What would that take, then, for us to do that oversight? In terms of staffing or?
There's, there's no question that, that this would involve either someone who has knowledge of permitting and, of the type that we're talking about, or we, on a case-by-case basis, involve some sort of outside consultant, which is similar to what Charlotte County used to do when they were more proactive in protecting the watershed, is that they would outsource this. In fact, Todd Kinkade, our expert in, in our case, was, was one of those consultants that was brought in to review applications for mining. So that's the, that's, that's option A. Option B, which is probably more realistic, would read as follows. "No new permit or license or any renewal, modification, or extension of an existing permit or license may be granted by any state or county body or agency for any activity within Shell and Prairie Creek watersheds without first providing written notice to the City of Punta Gorda of an application for such action, and providing the City of Punta Gorda a meaningful opportunity to comment upon, and if appropriate, object to the granting of the requested action. After receipt of such written request, the City of Punta Gorda shall have standing to challenge the action of any state or county body or agency in the appropriate form as provided by law. The boundaries of the Shell and Prairie Creek watershed shall be established by the Southwest Florida Water Management District." What this does is, first of all, and most importantly, it requires that the city be provided with written notice of the application. And that way, if a permit is granted or a renewal is granted, for example, without evidence of providing the city with that, with that notice, then theoretically, that permit would be invalid until the city has had an opportunity for its input, and, and the city could require that the process start over again. The other part is, is just to make sure, to avoid some of the defenses that may have been initially raised against the city in present case, that, that the city would have legal standing to challenge a permit that was issued by the county or the state as it may relate to impacts to our drinking water supply. So I would be comfortable with, with option B if the legislature saw fit to approve that. I think the city would be best protected if they would see fit to approve option A.
Comments? Yes, Kim?
I have a question. After sitting through the, the first hearing and listening to some of that, and, you know, reading all of the stuff that we get on this, we have, part of the county, what the county's saying is that we have Swift Mudd and DEP that are, that is overlooking this, and they're looking at these permits, and they're, they're really, it's their job to make sure that our water is protected, our potable water. What you're, what, what we're saying is that they're not measuring the, the way they should, that we would want them to, the evaporation so that Shell Creek would be. So would it be better for us to be talking to Swift Mudd about perhaps doing that? So that, because I, I see what the county's saying, that, okay, now we're going to look over this, and they're going to look over this, and now the city's going to look over this, and we're all going to be looking over this. Not that we shouldn't be looking over, and that we shouldn't be made aware of it, but wouldn't it be better to go to Swift Mudd and say, "You need to be looking at the evaporation rates. This is a problem for us," and get them to do their job?
One of the things that I've, I am discovering, and a lot of this has come out basically since the first round of hearings, and you'll hear more about it in the second round, and how the judge is going to deal with this, I'm not quite sure, but there, there is, there are some competing political agendas.
I get that.[1687.13][1687.13](Laughter).
And, and I'm saying with respect to Swift Mudd itself.
I know.
And if they appropriate, if Swift Mudd's permit reviewers follow the regulations that they are tasked to follow, it may frustrate Swift Mudd's agenda in another important area. And so I'm not sure how conscious Swift Mudd is of that. I mean, I really don't know how this happens, but what I do know is that it is very clear in the regulations, for example, that any cumulative impacts as a result of the withdrawal, and, and evaporation is a withdrawal.
Right.
Needs to be evaluated in deter, in determining whether or not to grant a permit for a, a mine or other excavation that's going to go into the surficial aquifer.
So it's already within Swift Mudd's regulations?
Yes.
It is.
But from what I hear from the mine's expert witness, who I deposed a few weeks ago, it's his position, and he's a former Swift Mudd employee, that if Swift Mudd was to enforce those provisions in the code that are intended to protect the surficial aquifer, our drinking water supply, that would adversely affect, in their opinion, the effectiveness of what? the effectiveness of what's called the FARMs program, which is a program that SWIFTMUD has developed with the participation of all of the stakeholders in the protection of the Shell and Prairie Creek watersheds to eliminate, or at least minimize, the effect of the deep water, groundwater pumping for irrigation purposes by trading that for use of the superficial aquifer. In other words, the superficial aquifer has always been a protected drinking water aquifer.
Right.
And therefore, you don't take withdrawals out of that unnecessarily.
Mm-hmm.
And that's why.
But the farms are.
And that's, and that's, and that's why the deeper aquifer wells were the, the preferred wells. But that, those deeper aquifers also have higher concentrations of the salts, which are adversely affecting Shell Creek.
Right.
So the FARMs program was developed as a means to try to eliminate the deeper water aquifers and to come up with, come up with different means to provide irrigation. I'm told that the, first of all, when you look at the information that, that SWIFTMUD will tell you about the FARMs program, that what they feature is that there are a lot of uncapped or unsupervised or managed old wells that are overflowing with, with this bad deep water that's flowing into Shell Creek and that their primary objective is to locate and to, and to cap these, these wells. You don't see anything in there specifically with respect to the use of these mine pits for alternate sources of irrigation. But what's, what's happened is that farmers have been encouraged to create these, to turn over the mine pits into reservoirs for agricultural purposes. I'm, I am told that when the stakeholder, when the stakeholders had their discussions about this, and for example, the City of Punta Gorda signed off on it, the concept was that the reservoirs would be shallow reservoirs that would not be cutting into the superficial aquifer, so that the source of the water that was going, that was being reused for irrigation was basically captured rainwater. But in implication, what happens is that a farmer gets a grant from SWIFTMUD to dig a reservoir. Oh, and by the way, that reservoir, the dirt can be now sold in addition to getting a grant from the state. And that reservoir apparently does not have any limitations with respect to whether it's going to go into the superficial aquifer or not. And so in order to get enough dirt to make it profitable, they're cutting into the superficial aquifer. And then what, what they're doing now is they're taking water instead of from the deeper aquifer, they're taking it from this reservoir, which is essentially a superficial aquifer supplied reservoir. They're pumping it onto the, the crops and then having that water come back to this reservoir. If the reservoir was lined so that there would no longer be water coming up from the superficial aquifer and there would not be the chance of whatever fertilizers or other things that would be running off as part of the recirculation into the mine pits, no chance of that getting into Shell Creek, we wouldn't have a problem. But that's what's happening and SWIFTMUD, for whatever reason, is not even looking at the impacts of recycling that water that's really going directly into or potentially into this official aquifer and Shell Creek as a result of this FARMs program. And if they did look into it, it probably would frustrate the application or implementation of the FARMs program as it has developed. And so I wish that we could rely upon SWIFTMUD the way the county and its ordinance and its, and its proposed regulations would rely upon SWIFTMUD to follow the law, but from what I've seen, they're not following the letter of the law, nor do I think we would be very successful in convincing them to do so if the reason why they're not doing it is to foster another agenda.
But what I'm saying, can I just follow up? Is that that is their job. And so if we aligned with the county and said, you need to do your job because otherwise we're going to be hiring experts and the county's going to be hiring experts to make sure that SWIFTMUD does their job. And if they're not with us anyway, they're constantly going to be trying to undermine what we're doing.
Well, I don't know how successful we would be in aligning with the county because the county is the reason why we're in this fight to begin with, because they've taken away the protections that they originally put in there.
Right.
And then from the other side of the coin, and I really didn't mean to make this into a big debate, but we've had problems in dealing with SWIFTMUD in the past and getting them to understand our position, which ran counter to somebody's political agenda.
David, and isn't there the, the fact that the separation between SWIFTMUD and DEP? SWIFTMUD, as I understand it, is involved with a, with a quantity of water and then DEP is involved with a quality of the water. So as the quantity of the water gets minimized as a result of the evaporation theory and that, then the, the, the quality of the water is going to deteriorate as well. So a resolution singularly with SWIFTMUD, if one was even possible, may not solve the, the global picture, the bigger picture.
Well, part of the problem as well with SWIFTMUD is that, and, and you're right, the original setup is DEP is water quality and SWIFTMUD is water quantity. However, as a cost savings measure, the water quality jurisdiction has been delegated to SWIFTMUD in many areas. And so SWIFTMUD issues two permits for a, a mine, for example. One is a SWIFT, one is called an environmental resource permit, ERP, which, which under the statutes was, was originally issued by DEP as a water quality permit. And SWIFTMUD would, and mines also require a water use permit with respect to the withdrawal of water from the aquifer. But now SWIFTMUD is, is, is actually issuing both an environmental resource permit and a, a water use permit, which to some extent is, since SWIFTMUD is in the business historically of allowing uses of water, just making, just sort of trying to regulate that, if the water quality sides of things would, would cause SWIFTMUD not to be able to allow for the use of water, that also creates sometimes a conflict of interest. I also have this belief that since the managers of the SWIFTMUD's programs, as it relates to permitting, were initially looking at impacts from, the traditional impacts of withdrawals, which is the impact on the aquifer, deep aquifers, so that the other users, other people that are pumping from the deep aquifers, are not being adversely affected. When you, when, when SWIFTMUD was then given the responsibility to also look at the impacts on the nat, the environment, natural environment that DEP used to look at, they're primarily looking at impacts to wetlands in the area of the proposed project. And what I saw as, as a huge gap in their regulations is yes, or not the regulations, but the implementation of the regulations when issuing these permits, they're looking at the impacts on the wetlands that are surrounding or in the vicinity of the mine project and, and how that withdrawal of water is, is affecting the amount of water available to, for the wetlands. But they're not looking at the impact of the withdrawals on the superficial aquifer and the, and the, and the supply to Shell Creek. If, if SWIFT, you're right, if SWIFTMUD would do their job, we would be much more comfortable in making sure that our watershed was protected. But there's all kinds of things going on, including exemptions or modifications from it, from, from mine permitting to agricultural, which doesn't require reviews, and all kinds of things which may be very well-intentioned, but the end result is the impacts that we're experiencing and concerned about with respect to Shell Creek.
Do you have a, a sense of, of how unique Punta Gorda is and our watershed is compared to the rest of, of water consumption in the rest of the state that is dependent upon watersheds?
Intuitively, the direct answer to your question is no. I haven't really done a study of that. Intuitively, a lot of the mining, the rock mining that's gone on in the state has gone on unrelated to or unassociated with a watershed. And so, for example, in areas of, other parts, the center part of the state, where the impacts to the aquifers are, are really not a major consideration, the water management districts that might be issuing permits to make sure that the deeper aquifers aren't affected by the mining or whatever, doesn't have that problem that, that SWIFTMUD has with respect to ours. You know, my phosphate mining has always been associated with water bodies because that's just the way, nature of where phosphates found. And so SWIFT, SWIFTMUD is much more familiar with that, regulating activities involving phosphate mining. But with respect to the sand mining, I don't, I'm not so sure.
Yes, Kim?
I guess what, what I, you know, if this is going to be on our legislative agenda or whatever, what I'm saying is if I were sitting in their seats, I would like to see us trying to work through this and say, if we could get SWIFTMUD and DEP to do what really they're tasked to do, that would be great. But if they can't do it, then we would like this, so that we can protect our water.
In terms of timing?
I mean, I just feel like this whole process, the more I learn about it, the...
Well, it gets, yeah, there's too many fingers going in all different directions.
Right, and there's just Band-Aids all over. We're putting Band-Aids and that.
I'm not sure that this is then perhaps premature this year in terms of a legislative action. I would, I would agree with you, Kim. I think we should be approaching SWIFTMUD and DEP with regards to these kinds of issues that, and I think through this case, these issues will emerge.
Right.
And be then on record as, you know, where the, where the gaps actually are.
I, I think those are.
Yes.
Those are very good points.
Yes.
Before we go away from here, we need to recognize that the FARMs program has helped us.
It has indeed.
It has helped us.
As it relates to the piping.
Yeah, don't think of the FARMs program as being negative. It is, it has helped us.
Right.
In terms of water, of water quality.
We'll try to repair the quality.
Quality. Yeah, and I understand that. And I understand that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, also the quality. I mean, the deep wells were what degraded our water in the first place.
Right.
Yeah, no, I would agree. This seems to be premature and it may be difficult to get SWIFTMUD to agree with us, but I think we have to allow the process to work and follow it through, and maybe perhaps a year from now, we'll have more data to be able to work with and be more specific.
Well, I think, again, the case that David is working on, I think this is going to unveil a lot of information that perhaps, again, even the governing board of SWIFTMUD was not aware of.
Right.
So I think that in and of itself. I also think, though, the conversation with our legislators should begin now so that they understand that we have real concerns about what is going on and how it's being done, et cetera.
Right.
I don't know whether, again, moving forward on, to, to do this as a permit or license will help us.
Right.
I think we will then end up, as a city, having to pay for those consultants to, again, review each of the notices, each of the permits.
I mean, I think we have to shine a light on the inefficiencies and the things that are not happening.
Yep.
So that the correct agency.
And to see if there's some balances.
Right.
I think David's...
And if they, if they don't know, then maybe they'll just step right up and take charge.
Well, and I think your recommendation, or if, if the reservoirs are lined, that that might, again, help resolve the issue. So there probably are resolutions out there, but...
I mean, we, I think we saw, even in the very beginning of all of this, I know Tom had a turbidity issue we thought might have been caused by one of the mines, but on further investigation, they found out that it was really a farmer who had dug a ditch. I mean, that's how delicate the water system is. I mean, so there's all kinds of things that need to be looked at to protect the water, not just the mines. I mean, so.
Right.
Someone has to be looking at those issues. And it's not really the City of Punta Gorda's responsibility, but I think we need to make the people responsible, responsible. We, our taxpayer dollars are paying them.
And we pay SWIFTMUD if you look at your...
Right, that's what I'm saying.
We are, we pay SWIFTMUD, yes.
Exactly.
And we may have the opportunity to bring that to light in this forum. I'm not entirely sure that we're going to be able to get as much information as we need to.
Right.
But it certainly is worth postponing this action because I, I think you're right. The question is going to be asked, isn't, doesn't SWIFTMUD already do that? And to try to convince them that it doesn't is basically our word against SWIFTMUD.
Against theirs. Or DEP. You know, we have two people, quality and quantity.
Yes.
If we're going to not conclude that, I do have Councilmember Keigling's comments.
Okay.
I am presenting the entire Florida League of Cities' action agenda to the delegation on behalf of the Southwest Florida League of Cities. So if there are specific items, vacation rentals, water policies, et cetera, and we've identified them, that the city wants to incorporate, I can support that. But she does not support any request for any more appropriation of funding, which is our recommendation as well.
Now, we haven't talked about that, but I think we sort of talked about that previously and we haven't brought it forward here.
But the, but the League of Cities is a perfect forum to carry this message forward.
Yes.
I think that's, that's an avenue that we should be pursuing.
Because the water problems are throughout Florida, not just Punta Gorda.
Correct. Well, then, if we can, we'll drop that issue then? Is that agreed?
Yes.
Okay. The second request was regarding standardized local election dates. And this, again, has just come forward within the last week and a half, basically, from Representative Caldwell is considering legislation that seeks to standardize local election dates. In terms of, if we were going to do that, it would kind of blow out our charter. We have a city charter that has specific information about how we can conduct our elections. We would have repetitive elections. We would be paying probably every year if people are running in those elections. I think it is just bad policy. And I don't know how far it's going to get, but I think we should at least be on record. And I know that is also probably, while it's not in the general legislative requests from the League of Cities, it is one that they are going to be, believe, taking on.
Yes.
Any other, are we agreed to incorporate it?
Absolutely.
If you have any additional changes to language or, you know, pumping it up at all, you know, get it, get it to us or whatever. The additional policy requests, and here again, we agreed, I believe, to support both the Florida League of Cities and the Charlotte County's legislative agendas, recommending that. Most of the items that they have throughout of theirs is, I think, supports us, yes.
With, with one exception.
Okay.
We want to, again, I know the Charlotte County commissioners are going to discuss this next week, but we need to go on record again as saying, we will, we do not request that they ask for any money for the Vietnam Wall.
Right.
Absolutely.
We made that commitment that we weren't going to do that.
Right. And yet in their, the legislative policy material that I received from Commissioner Truex, it does not include it.
Well...
So, but I guess they've had conversations since that time to incorporate it and now they will be discussing whether they will...
They would need to take it out.
They would need to take it out.
They would need to take it out.
So, all right, well, that's, we can, we can definitely make that clear. Do we have to do that with our, I don't know that we have to put that in our legislative? It's not included here, so...
No, we just need to, again, be on record that...
That is something that we would not support. Again, we begin with this one, additional policy... Again, we begin with this one, additional policy requests. I have the city of Pontagorda, well, as it's, Pontagorda opposes any legislation that diminishes local governments' home rule or shifts costs for state programs to local governments without a permanent source of funding. And that is from, basically from the League of Cities, but I think that is kind of an overarching request
Right.
to our legislators. And then in addition, these other areas, issues related, and we go to water and environmental policies. Issues related to water and the environment remain high on our list, requiring your attention, and therefore Pontagorda supports the following. And the first one does come from the Florida League of Cities. I don't know whether we want to do a second one, which reemphasizes our concern for Shell Creek. Maybe that's where we would put it.
I don't think we're going to include it.
Well, not the way it's presented here, but some effort to say mitigates pollution from on-site, that's supposed to be from, I think it says from on your, on your, from on-site, it wasn't changed, from on-site wastewater, expands the use of alternative water resources, recognizing that reclaimed water is an asset paid for by utilities rate and requires all infrastructure users to pay the cost of operation and maintenance of such facilities.
Maybe this is where there just could be a paragraph of...
Well, this is, this is, you know, this is where they use the phrase, "Alternative water resources," that's what turning mine pits into irrigation reservoirs, it fits under, and that's how they're using it to justify it. So, I mean, I, it sounds great and, and in all other instances, it's probably to be encouraged, but I, I don't know how you really bring to the attention of anybody that, that should not make it easier to take water from the superficial aquifer. Again, the idea, the concept was that they wouldn't be taking any water from the superficial aquifer, but, but, but that's not the way it's being implemented.
Well, might want to look at maybe doing something else, again, just focused on our, I, I don't have the language, but maybe if you don't mind, I'll, I'll work with David and maybe we'll, yes, just at least add another bullet there as ours, and then the additional issues then come from Charlotte County and the Florida League of Cities.
That would be helpful. Thank you.
Do you have any issues with any of the other ones that were included in this document? We go from water and environmental policy to public health and safety, transportation, economic development and fiscal responsibility.
It's a big list.
It's a very big list, but these, but I think these are the ones that we're supporting from theirs, but they all affect us.
Right, sure, absolutely.
I was looking for where we put in vacation rentals.
Do, do we really need that last bullet under economic development? We talked about it last year, we do really need that.
Okay, well, there are a couple then. We could take off that one. I was thinking the same thing.
I mean, we don't.
Okay.
And...
What about the others relating, procure professional service for architects?
Well, no.
These, these three that I've listed as Pontagorda on the last page were from last year.
Yeah, and we never really, you could probably take off the assumption of risk and warranty, I mean, that never went anywhere and neither did the other one. I mean, it just...
Just take them off.
Which bullets?
They're the, um,
On page what?
Last one, on the last page, page four, the last bullet.
Okay.
And then the third bullet from the bottom and the fourth bullet from the bottom, the two of Pontagorda's that I've identified. We had those in our last year's policy requests.
I've had them for years, it never...
Right, nothing ever happens. Okay, let's take those out.
Okay.
Okay. I was looking for where we had, oh, vacation rentals is the first one under economic development. Legislation that allows local governments to regulate vacation rental properties protect the health and welfare of residents, visitors and businesses. I'm not sure that we need the regulation, but that's the one that I think having more local control would be helpful.
Absolutely.
So are we okay with this? Yes, David?
Yep.
Two points, if I'm right.
Sure.
The fourth bullet underwater environmental policy.
Mm-hmm.
It says, "Continued encouragement of the Florida Department of Environmental Protection in a comprehensive monitoring of the cumulative impacts of the implementation of the revised Clean Water Act or WOTUS rule on the state of Florida."